Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council to order Tuesday, February 3, 2015. Councilor Clark, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
President Hay.
Here.
Councilor Bean.
President.
Councilor Boishman.
Here.
Councilor Beesaw.
President.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Deena Tally.
Here.
Councilor Green.
Here.
Council Joseph.
Here.
Council Caddy.
Here.
Council Kuschmerik.
President.
Council Tran.
Here.
We'll now have the public forum. Anybody wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing a public hearing petition, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the Senate table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Nicholas Foye, Scott Road. I'd like to address Article 1315, which just got shut down a few minutes ago in the Safety Commission meeting. After listening to the arguments back and forth, like I said a few minutes ago, I feel like it was shut down without safety ever being taken into account. Seems like we are more concerned about the business owner than the safety of the general public. And I think there should be, at the minimum, some kind of study done as to the traffic situation down there. I drive down there. It's a dangerous area. I don't frequent that establishment anymore just because of taking a left out of that establishment. I've been in the road when people are trying to take a left out of there. It's very hazardous. And, like I said, I think it got shut down too quickly without actually talking about the safety aspect of it. That is all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Laxo?
Thank you. I'm Lenny Laxo, DPW Commissioner. I'd like to talk about Order Number 01715. Requesting that $250,000 be transferred from available funds to the various snow and ice accounts. When I wrote the letter requesting this last week, we were still in the black as far as the snow and ice budget goes. But for the last couple of days, we've been hit with another large storm. So we haven't seen the bills yet, but we're committed to spending, you know, additional $95,000 or so, which will put us in the red. So if we can suspend the rules and...
Motion for suspension on 17-15.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules on 17-15. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is before you. We have a motion and a second that 01715 be adopted. Speaking to the motion, I would just like to take a moment to thank Mr. Laxo and all the employees of the DPW for the amount of work and effort that they have put into clearing the streets with over 50 inches of snow in the last six days. That people can get from point A to point B is pretty miraculous and I'd like to say thank you. Council Boishman.
I don't know if this has to do with this, but... Lenny, you and I talked quite a bit, and you told me, am I right or wrong, that we could probably save $10,000 a storm if we did towing? Because you can do the streets faster?
I mean, if we...
A storm. $10,000 a storm.
Yeah, I mean, that was an estimate. If we, if people cooperate and do not park their cars on the street during a snow emergency parking game, the job goes much faster. I think last week's blizzard was a good example of that. There was a travel ban and a parking ban, and we were able to plow that snow very quickly so that we didn't even need the parking ban over the following night. So we were able to scale it back, you know, by a good eight hours or so. But we spent about $5,000 an hour when we're plowing snow. So if we can cut two hours off the end by working more efficiently, it certainly helps.
So what you're saying is, if we really enforce the rules, we can do a better job and we can get the streets done faster. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, that's true. And we've been working with the police on that. During yesterday's storm, you know, the police did towing on their own. We didn't even have to, you know, call them and tell them their car is parked here and there. They were proactive in yesterday's storm and took care of it.
All right. Thank you, Lenny.
Council Bean.
President, through you, Commissioner. I want to echo your thoughts also for the work that the men and women do at the DPW. They've done a great job of keeping the streets safe and clean and continue to do that. I also want to thank you personally, Lenny, for your great customer service. During the past week, there's been a couple of emails going around that the council's got. One was the Pritchard Street area, one was the Chester Street area, different issues and concerns. And you're able to take care of those and deal with those right away. I appreciate that. And I think that's the important part about being a city department head is to be able to be responsive to people. And you really show that and emulate that. And I appreciate the fact that you take the time to do that. I just want to thank you for that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt 01715. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at the public forum? Yes, sir.
President Hay, council members. As a member of the Senate, I'm with Elite Construction.
Could you come to the Senate table and identify yourself, please?
All right. My name is Matt Fornier with Elite Construction. I'm also a business owner, property owner in Pittsburgh and a part of the Pittsburgh Pride. I'm a board member on the organization. On behalf of the Board of Pittsburgh Pride, I'm writing basically to let you guys know that the organization is in support of the redevelopment of the BF Brown Building into artist housing. I believe that's on the topic of the agenda tonight. While we know there are many, many still unanswered questions about the project, we're generally excited about the project and would hope that projects like this would be accepted by the city for future development. We don't believe these specific buildings will be developed with private funding or by a private developer outside of the Twin Cities CDC. I've personally done some feasibility studies and budgeting on this project, one of these buildings specifically, and know firsthand that it will need funding to be brought to the table. While we know that these types of projects are in return what will change the neighborhoods in Pittsburgh. These are the projects that are going to create a new energy, a new sense of place for our community and for our residents, while rehabilitating three of Pittsburgh's gems, three of the most historic buildings in the area. Working with the Art Museum of Downtown Businesses and Artist Communities in the university will not only create housing and local jobs during construction, but also pay long-term dividends towards the win-win everybody is pushing for in Pittsburgh. Undeveloped areas like these are slowly taking the life out of the city, one block at a time. The proximity to downtown would have a direct impact on the Upper Common for years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Ralph McDaniels. I'm a resident of Elm Street. I've been here for six years. And I think it would be a good idea to turn that school into housing for artists, which that school's been there for a long time. And with it being empty like that, it could cause trouble. And I think it would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All have been heard. We will move to the report of the Committee on Records. Councilor Green.
The minutes have been looked over and are in order and all set.
We approve the...
Will the Committee on Records report the acceptance?
We have a motion and a second to approve the Committee on Records report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Appointments Committee, Council Bean.
Mr. President, the Appointments Committee met tonight. We had one, two new appointments in the, for special police officers. Retired Lieutenant Linda Swears and retired Officer Matt DeBira, both unanimously approved by the City Council to be special police officers of the city. We had two new positions in the Members of the Disability Commission, two new appointments. Ms. Mary Ann Bouchard, 245 River Street, Department 410, Pittsburgh, Mass. And Marshall Hensians, 460 High Rock Road. We had another appointment, Laura Casey, which we held. So she appears before the committee. We had one reappointment, remember the Council on Aging, Mr. Joseph D. Byrne, term expires January 1, 2018. And that was approved by the committee.
Motion to accept the Appointments Committee report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Appointments Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Councilors, we're going to have the city clerks swear in, the two special police officers. Chief of the officers, come forward, please.
Looking for the pit. Fire.
Moving on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Dear honorable councilors, I hereby appoint and ask your confirmation of Mr. Stephen Twining of 7 Sawmill Pond Road, Pittsburgh, Mass. As a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire on February 1, 2017. Mr. Twining's appointment is to fulfill the remainder of the term vacated by Mr. Michael Hurley. This appointment pursuant to City Code, Chapter 3, Section 250B, 1A, was one of the two nominees selected by the Pittsburgh Historical Society. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Dear honorable councilors, I hereby appoint and ask your confirmation of Mr. Aaron Turigney of 45 Rynick Road, Pittsburgh, Mass. As an associate member of the Planning Board for a term to expire on January 1, 2017. Mr. Turigney's appointment is to fill an open vacancy. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Dear honorable councilors, I hereby appoint and ask your confirmation of Mr. Patrick M. Prince of 118 High Rock Road, Pittsburgh. As a member of the Energy Commission for a term to expire April 1, 2017. This appointment is to fill a vacancy left by the resignation of John Labarre. Also, councilors, with other communications, you do have on your table a letter from Pittsburgh State University President Robert Antonucci regarding the sale of the BF Brown.
Will the letter from the president of the university refer to the petition, of course?
Refer to the petition wherever that goes, the letter will go. We also have a letter from the Pension Reserve's Investment Management Board. And we also have a letter from Kelly Brown Central Region Smart Energy Solutions. That'll be referred to the Energy Commission. Thank you. Moving to the agenda. Councilors, first item on the agenda is a special presentation. I would like to comment before the presentation. We have a special presentation from the Pittsburgh Art Museum and the Pittsburgh Community Development Corporation regarding the BF Brown School. A while ago, there was a petition before us, which was held. And these two agencies were asked to come before us to give us more information once they had finalized their agreement, what their agreement would be. Their agreement also connects to a petition that is filed with us tonight, 02115, from Larry Cassassa, approving the sale of BF Brown to the Pittsburgh Affordable Housing Corporation, 470 Main Street, which at this point is referenced now to City Property Committee. Councilors may want to change that and do it to a council as a whole committee. This will be up to you, members of the council, tonight, excuse me, how you'd like to handle this. My suggestion is they make the presentation. We digest their information and then we bring that back when we have a committee meeting to ask questions and to vet it. But if people want to ask questions tonight, feel free to do so. We may be repeating ourselves. Council Bean.
Mr. President, if it would be in order, I would make a motion to take that petition, which is 02115.
Yeah.
Make a recommendation that goes to council whole. That would give all the council an opportunity to speak on it and to act on it. If it went to City Property Committee, then tonight might be an opportunity to ask questions. But if we send it to committee in the whole, we can wait for that period of time. So I would make a motion at this point, if I could, to take 021-15 and refer it to Council Hall meetings.
We have a motion and a second that 02115 be sent to the council as a whole committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. If we could have the representatives from the Art Museum and the Pittsburgh Community Development Corporation make their presentation, we'd appreciate it. Gentlemen?
Thank you all very much. I am Mark Doan. I'm the Executive Director of the Twin Cities Community Development Corporation. My address is 470 Main Street in Pittsburgh. I want to thank you, Council President Hay, for inviting me to address all of you tonight. I also want to thank and recognize Councilor Tran for all the work that he's done on the property committee, shepherding this through, and Councilor Kuschmerik, who's Ward Counselor, and of course, Mayor Wong, for all the work that she has done as well. So I just want to speak briefly. I know this is a very long process and I don't, I want to give you more time to ask questions and for me to drone on. And hopefully I can answer any questions that either Larry Cassassa from the city or John Barrett, the city solicitor, isn't able to answer. And I also know, we already heard from Ralph McDaniels, who's a resident of Elm Street, and you'll hear from Nick Capasso from the Art Museum also. So this project is designed to revitalize Pittsburgh. Twin Cities CDC has always innovated. We've always helped to lead the market. We did it successfully in plug-on with the Plymouth Street Initiative, and we did it on 470 Main Street. And we see this as another project in that line where we're doing something new that hasn't been done before in the city. Let me give you a very quick overview of the project. We see it mostly as an economic development project. It's about making Pittsburgh a great place to live, work, and invest. We're going to convert BF Brown, the stables and the former annex, all of which are vacant and deteriorating, into a new Pittsburgh Arts Complex, which the construction cost is around $15 million. We propose that at least 30% of the 55 artist preference housing will be at market rate. We propose that the balance of the apartments will have a rent that a typical tenant in Pittsburgh can afford, and that is affordable for artists as well. In general, that means tenants will have to earn about $25,000 and they can earn as much as $50,000 depending upon their family size. If they're paying less in rent, it means they have more income to spend in our local stores. The rents will be $700 to $1,100 depending upon apartment and all the rest of those things. And this is a mixed-use, mixed-income redevelopment that will marry the arts, culture, education, and housing to help stabilize a neighborhood. Will also create artist amenities throughout the building, such as perhaps a music room, a studio to paint, a video room, a kiln, or a potter's wheel. Part of why we took this project on is because this is catalyzing Pittsburgh's strongest resources, its cultural base. Pittsburgh is the cultural capital of North Central Massachusetts with the art museum and a university. And this can change the way those outside the city look at us and bring new businesses to downtown Pittsburgh. Each new artist that moves into the building can be its own small business. Perhaps a painter selling their work or teaching a student, a musician writing a song or playing in a band, a graphic artist designing a new website or a new computer game. And we already started classes for artists. We're calling them, "I'm an artist, not an accountant," to lay the groundwork for this type of project. This is a special project. While there are other art complexes, I don't know of too many that are across the street from a great art museum that wants to partner to make this happen. And this will be a partnership. We have to partner not only with the city and the art museum, but also with the state, the university, and it will be part of the Working Cities Initiative. Twin Cities CDC and the art museum have developed a preliminary agreement so that we will attract great artists to the project, which will in turn improve interest in the art museum and bring more people into the city of Pittsburgh. We've also agreed not to go forward with the project if we cannot feasibly develop artist housing. And I can let Larry Cassassa from the city speak more about that. That's been part of the negotiations that we've had for, and why it's taken so long, is for us to be able to thread that needle. Finally, I want to let you know, you know this already, that these buildings are deteriorating. They're empty. They're falling apart. We propose to redevelop them historically. That's part of the equity that we'll raise to make this project work. And we'll be putting the buildings back on the tax rolls. All the CDC's projects pay full property taxes. We're, we are a nonprofit, but for this type of a project, it will be put back on the rules. Finally, this will help market the creative economy in Pittsburgh and serve as a launching pad for the new cultural district to bring people to downtown and help fill the vacant storefronts. And this is a project that's been designated essential by the state-designated cultural district. That's what I'll, I have to say tonight. I turn it back to you, Councilor Hay, and we'll figure out what we do next.
Nick?
Thank you. I'm Nick Capasso. I'm the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Art Museum. We're located at 185 Elm Street. I would like to echo Mark's thanks to the council as a whole and to the individual councilors who have helped us get to this presentation and to Mayor Wong for her support. We are thrilled to partner with Mark and the Twin Cities Community Development Corporation. We have been consistently impressed with their excellent work throughout the city and especially in our Elm Street neighborhood. I've been the director at the art museum now for just over two years. And for that entire time, I have been intrigued by this big, beautiful, boarded-up, looming building immediately across the street from the art museum. So much so that I met with Mark very early on in my tenure, and we rapidly agreed to work together to share our areas of expertise to repurpose the BF Brown Building and the adjacent properties. The CDC will do what it does best, financing, project, and building management. The art museum will do what we do best, arts management. Individually, neither organization could do this. We couldn't pull this off either the CDC or the art museum. But together, we can create something extraordinary in downtown Pittsburgh. I've come to see the BF Brown Building and the adjacent two buildings as the museum's simultaneously greatest opportunity and greatest threat. If we do nothing with these buildings, they will continually degrade to the point where they won't be worth investing in. And then the buildings will continue to degrade and they'll be very difficult to demolish because of the great cost and because of the historic significance of the buildings. They become blight that cannot be fixed and cannot be removed. Buildings will consistently, over time, degrade the neighborhood, its appearance, its livability, its property values, and public safety. Drug and prostitution-related crimes are already on the rise on Elm Street, and people are getting into the buildings to conduct this business. This neighborhood includes the Elm Street Community Church, the Sundial Senior Housing Complex, Low Park with its children's programs, Long Joe Middle School, Workers' Credit Union, and the Pittsburgh Art Museum, this city's only downtown tourist destination. The museum has been working very hard to attract new visitors to the city from Boston and Metro West with improved exhibitions and marketing. We're now regularly covered in the Boston Globe, where people are reading good news about what's happening in Pittsburgh. And our visitation from the Boston area over the last year and a half is up 50%. New visitors to the museum will not return if they do not feel safe in the neighborhood. And they will tell their friends back in Boston and Concord and Weston and Lincoln and Acton that they shouldn't bother coming here because the museum is nice, but they're not going to believe what they see on Elm Street. The buildings sitting vacant are a direct, long-term threat to the future of this city's art museum. On the flip side is the opportunity. By repurposing these buildings for artists' live workspace, we can save the museum's future, save three historic buildings, stabilize and enhance the neighborhood, and help spark economic development. We can establish a strong anchor for the proposed Upper Common Cultural District. We can bring 100 working, educated, entrepreneurial, creative people to downtown Pittsburgh to live, work, shop, dine, participate in civic life, and the creation of a strong cultural community. The presence of this active artist community will also significantly improve public perceptions of Pittsburgh, which will be regarded as forward-thinking, innovative, and welcoming to creative residents and creative economy initiatives. I'd like to move on to, there have been a lot of questions about how exactly the art museum is going to support this project. Here's what we're going to do. The museum is the major marketing draw for the residents. As Mark indicated, while many artists' residential and studio buildings exist in New England, none are adjacent to a major museum committed to a lasting community partnership. The museum will assist the CDC in marketing to prospective artist residents throughout New England with our own networks and marketing expertise and... New England with our own networks and marketing expertise and systems. We will engage in advocacy for this project like we're doing right now. We'll design and implement the system to vet the artist residents. The museum will host advocacy and fundraising events for this project at cost. The museum will assist with hiring architects, landscape architects, and other design professionals. The museum will work with these design professionals to create an overall campus feel that visually unites the three repurposed historical buildings with the museum's buildings and outdoor courtyard. The museum will offer expert advice on the design of appropriate studio and rehearsal spaces for the visual and performing arts in the buildings. And then, once the buildings are occupied with residents, the museum will help to sustain the artist community in the following ways. The museum will exhibit and sell artwork and program performances by the resident artists. The museum will animate the entire campus with public art. The museum will advise on public programming, including an annual open studios event in the buildings that will attract hundreds of visitors downtown annually. The museum will help the artist community to create lasting and sustainable partnerships as we have with local cultural organizations, the Fitchburg Public Schools, and Fitchburg State University. The museum will also actively solicit resident artists to teach classes and workshops and to serve in the museum's installation crew and security staff. And the museum will engage in cross-programming and cross-marketing with the artist community. And we're ready to start this tomorrow. We have the full support of our Board of Trustees, several of whom are here in the audience tonight. We are, we have just embarked on a planning process for a five-year strategic plan. If this process gets approved, this will be rolled into that planning process, and it will have, bear the full weight of our creative thinking about the course of the museum over the next five years. We're ready to apply our considerable staff expertise. As the Director of the museum, I've had almost a quarter of a century of experience working within the New England artist community. Everyone knows me, everyone trusts me, everyone respects me. I've been in every artist building in the six New England states. The museum has already exhibited a strong curatorial commitment to New England contemporary artists, and we also recently hired as our new Director of Community Relations and Marketing Eugene Finney, who's here tonight. Eugene comes to us from the Boston Center for the Arts where he was directly responsible for running a program of over 100 artist studios. He was hired by the museum in part in anticipation of the BF Brown project. The museum, as many of you know, has also been undergoing a lot of repairs and restoration over the last year and a half. A lot of this has to do with reorienting the museum physically towards Elm Street. We have closed our entrance on Marion Parkway and reopened the entrance in a very open and broad way on Elm Street, and we've legally changed our mailing address. We've built a new courtyard and flower gardens which are publicly accessible along Elm Street, and we've improved our parking area along Elm Street. We have made major investments in streetscape improvement in our neighborhood. And as Mark indicated, we've signed a preliminary letter of agreement with the CDC that outlines everything I have just told you specifically. I have a great deal of optimism for this project. I know this will succeed, and here's why. Artists will tell you that in Boston and Cambridge and Somerville, which are the sort of highest percentage artist residency cities in the Commonwealth, there's no more studio space available. All those buildings have been developed to the point where then they were redeveloped and sold to lawyers and design firms. Artists have gentrified neighborhoods and been forced out by development. There's no place to go, and there's certainly no place that they can afford close to Boston. These people were going to be increasingly aware of the fact that we have, starting next fall, we will have enhanced rail service to Fitchburg, which services Boston and Cambridge directly. The city closest to us with the largest artist population is Worcester, Massachusetts. The city of Worcester, Massachusetts, and the Worcester Art Museum have done zero for their artist community. There is very little artist housing in Worcester despite the fact that the very large university community there supports hundreds of artist teachers, adjunct faculty, and students. We also have, I was surprised to find when I first came here, many, many artists here in north-central Massachusetts. The Lemonster Artist Association has over 300 members. In Gardner, just down the road, there are two separate artist organizations, each with memberships of over 300 people. This is a big pool of artists that this fairly small complex can serve. I'm also optimistic because all of these other artist buildings in this, in the Commonwealth and throughout New England that I have visited have waiting lists as long as my arm. Artists are desperate for these kinds of buildings, and they're desperate for this kind of community. And I hasten to add that the artists that we're talking about are not just visual artists like painters and sculptors, we're also talking about musicians, dancers, theater professionals, writers, filmmakers, videographers, photographers, and graphic designers. We're casting the net very wide. So in conclusion, and thank you for your patience, I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is not a one-off project for the Fitchburg Art Museum. This is absolutely consonant with our commitment to community service and works hand-in-hand with our other community-oriented programs such as our free admissions programs, our deep relationships with the Fitchburg Public Schools and Fitchburg State University, our community gallery, our bilingual museum initiative, our public art initiatives, and our work on the downtown cultural district. At the Fitchburg Art Museum, we believe that if Fitchburg thrives, the museum will also thrive, and we ask you to help make this happen by supporting the BF Brown project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nick, you mentioned the agreement between the art museum and the community development. 02-115 has been referred to as council's whole committee. Could we get copies of that so we would have that?
Twelve copies right here.
Yeah, just got to say get them to us before the meeting, that would be great. I just want to leave them here with the clerk, we'll distribute them afterwards. That'd be perfect. Thank you. Counsel Green?
When you said that you were willing, ready, and willing to go with this project, what is, what is the timeline? How quickly can you start on this project?
Well, there, there are things that both of us can start almost immediately. We can start the serious and conservative planning around all of the issues I talked about, all the things that the museum is going to do. The CDC can, you should answer this, Mark, about how the CDC can get started right away.
The first thing that we need to do, Counselor, and thank you for your question, is we need to do a feasibility study and demonstrate, this is in the purchase and sale agreement that you have, it's with the agreement that we have, that we can bring artists to the community, that we know exactly the amenities, that we know the building that we're going to be doing. So that's the very first step that we will do is, and it's very difficult to do, you have to find a specialized firm to do these artist market, these artist studies because there's no NAC code or SIC code that can say, that you put down on your, on a government form that tells you that you're necessarily an artist. As Nick was describing, you could be a photographer, a videographer, all sorts of things that show up under different codes. So we have to hire the right consultant to make sure that we can demonstrate to the, to ourselves, to the community, that we'll be able to design a building that will meet the purposes that we want to do, which is artist housing. So that's the very first thing that we'll do. We also need to do some things to just stabilize the building, and we also need to do a bunch of work on the historical, to preserve the historic character of the building.
All right, and my next question is, the affordable rents, $700 to $1,100 a month, so these are, these are real artists, these aren't people that, and I don't want to criticize anybody who does arts and crafts, but this is, these are not arts and crafts, these are artisans who are going to be renting this space, correct?
Yes, there's two different parts of your question. There will be, there are many different ways to establish that somebody is a true artist, and we'll be working with the art museum and a whole bunch of other, looking at a whole bunch of other models. We've been to Lowell, Hoyoke, a bunch of places to make sure that we're really establishing good criteria for what an artist is, and that's something that will be, that we'll be working on as well. Because we want to create a special community, and that means having like-minded people. And that's part of why we need the art museum's expertise, because if we don't have that, those like-minded folks, it's not going to be a place that people are going to want to live. So that was the first part of your question. The second part of your question, I think, relates to the income. So almost all the apartments, you'll have to pay rent, there's not, and there's a few apartments that have an operating subsidy attached to them, but maybe eight of the 55, the balance of the apartments, you all have to pay rent. And that makes us very different from what some people think of as subsidized housing where, which plays a very important role in the community, that allows people at a very low income to be able to live in an apartment when they really can't afford the rent, where they just pay one-third of their income. So a place like the Fitchburg Housing Authority is meeting that need. This project will not meet that need. This project, you have to earn, generally speaking, between $25,000 and $50,000 in order to afford to live in the apartments, because we have to be paid. We have operating costs, pay electricity, plows, taxes, all the rest of that stuff, and if we don't have any income coming in, we can't meet those obligations. So that's why there's a minimum income threshold for virtually all of the apartments. There will then be some apartments that have, where the rents can be higher.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Joseph?
This, I mean, sign me up. I mean, this is great stuff. Back when we put out for a downtown coordinator, we were looking for somebody that would, the cultural component was a huge part to the economic development of downtown. We recognized it 20 years ago, we recognize it today. We need to revitalize downtown, we need to bring artists downtown, we need to do that in order to get other businesses downtown. If there's nothing downtown, nobody will come. Put things downtown, people will come. And I just, I would hope that the city also has a partnership in this. I mean, you're doing your part, you live on Main Street, basically the CDC lives on Main Street. I'm so glad that you've opened up the back of your building once again. To close it down to that street, I thought was not justice to what the art museum was in the past, when we put the art school right in the basement of the Fitchburg Art Museum because it was a partnership with the BF Brown School, and then they moved it out of the, out of the, the museum. I just, those things were vital to the kids that were growing up in that area. So I'm glad that you've opened up the streetscape once again to Elm Street. The little cobblestone area was nice-looking, but it's not what I think the art museum is about for the city of Fitchburg. So with this building changing, I just see the whole process coming together. I hope that not only you two are in partnership, but we are in partnership in their Economic Development Coordinator with the two of you in order to make this a success for Fitchburg. And I want to thank you for the presentation that you brought us so far.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I do want to add, one of the ways that the art museum has been a real partner for us is, many of you have been to the Elm Street Area Neighborhood Association meetings, and every month, whenever we have a meeting, it's always at the art museum. The art museum opened up its doors long, has a long time to be a part of the community. They've never charged us anything for it. We've had many meetings in the Greek and Roman Gallery, which I understand is-
No longer.
No longer.
Counsel Levine?
Mr. President, and again, applaud your efforts, and it's good to see something happen there. It has happened here in Massachusetts, I believe, at Mass Mooc or North Adams, which again, city a little bit smaller than us, but struggling, I was able to come, pull it together, Mass Mooc, and they put some housing in for artist housing, I talked to Mayor about that, so it can be done. My concern is, and just as you're going forward, is that if we do give the property to you, there's going to be some restrictions on it, so that if this doesn't happen, it just doesn't lay there dormant in the hand. And I say that because probably the only person who remembers this is Counselor, a former Counselor G. Geronimo. There was a arts group, it had to have been 40 years ago, that took the old registry building, not on John Fitch Hill, the registry building on Water Street, which is by the union, the brick building there, they took that for a dollar from the city, and then it ended up in private hands. It really, you know, it didn't, it wasn't for the purpose it was. So I just want to make sure when we do do this transfer that there's some restrictions on it for the purpose, and then if that purpose does deviate, it comes back to the city for first option, because I always wondered how that property on the old registry building on Water Street ended up in private hands when we gave it for a dollar to a, to a cultural activity. So I just don't want to see that happen again.
So Counselor, I think the agreement that we have is such that we can't go forward with the project, we won't take the building until everything is ready to go. So there are a bunch of different ways to get at your concern, and that's the way that this agreement has been structured, so that the city, we won't actually get a deed until the financing's in place, until we've met all the terms of the purchase and sale agreement, which includes having all the financing and zoning, everything in place. So we won't have the building and then be able to let it, turn it over to somebody else. It will have to be done according to the proposals that we have submitted to you.
Thank you, and again, kudos for your project.
And we have been in touch with, thank you for your, I have been in touch with former Mayor Barrett, and we hope to bring him out to learn from him. Theirs was a slightly different project, financed differently because it was condominiums, not apartments, but we think we can learn a lot from them as well. Thank you.
Counsel Dean Talley?
What is the percentage of low-income housing?
I'm sorry?
What is the percentage of low-income housing for this building?
So, we've committed to make at least 30% of the units be completely unrestricted. We've also said that if we can find financing to allow us to do more than that, we would be happy to do more than that.
Is, is it true that the original proposal called for 100% low-income housing?
Yes.
And why did it go down to 70?
The way the original proposal was worded, we had to, it was very difficult for us to negotiate with the city. We had to put in a proposal, and the city could accept it or not accept it as it was. There was no advantage, the way the original proposal was, the way the original RFP was drafted, and I think this is not true of this RFP, I think it's true of all RFPs, that there was no advantage for us to be able to do the project in that fashion. After that, we met with the city, they expressed their concern, members of the committee expressed their concerns, and we frankly, Counselor, did a lot of homework to say, how could we figure out a different financing mechanism so that we can increase the percentage of market-rate housing? And over the course of a few months, we were able to find a different mechanism of financing the building, that we then spoke, did some diligence to make sure that this financing mechanism would be able to go forward, and that's how we were able to change the percentage.
Is it possible to have a market-rate housing complex for artists and not have it be subsidized? Can, can we have artist colonies that are not subsidized? Is that possible?
Absolutely. I just don't know how to do it. I mean, the problem is, at these, we need to get enough equity into the building so that the building can run itself. One of the things that's difficult, if we want to attract artists, we have to have a bunch of space in the building that is not income-producing.
Mark, I'm asking the question, only because I'm going to find myself a minority on this whole issue, but there are other occasions that we have been presented where we're told how everything is going to go just swell when these things occur, and it doesn't happen. We had the student overlay district that was sold to us as a bill of goods that students were going to flourish the downtown, and there hasn't been anything. And that was years ago. We have housing projects for students around the downtown area that are not filled to capacity. In fact, there are business, there are housing units that are applying for tax abatements because they are not getting the rent payments. So while I want this to succeed, forgive me if I'm skeptical at will, because I've heard this before, that this is an economic engine. I have not seen, based on the assessor's report, any increase in our economic commercial tax base whatsoever with the seven or eight housing projects we have in the downtown. We were told if we bring people in, stores will fall out, that hasn't happened, and the only evidence I can supply to that is our tax base hasn't moved at all. So I am a little skeptical of this, and that's the reason why, from the start, I wanted this to be commercial-only. So I'm asking, once again, in your expert opinion, well, maybe this is from Mr. Capasso, you stated that the museum's future is dependent on this. Does that mean the museum is in trouble if this doesn't go through?
No, not at all. I didn't mean financially.
Okay.
I meant the health and vitality of the museum. You don't have, you don't want to have a museum that no one comes to because people feel threatened and unsafe in the neighborhood.
So what-
We want to be able to, we have people, I'm told constantly by people in Pittsburgh, they tell me, well, I won't go to the museum because it's not a safe neighborhood.
How, how is this going to change that? Because, you know, the neighborhood is a big neighborhood, and there are perceptions that we face. So how is that, how is one building renovation going to change that?
Because it's an enormous building that is twice the size of the physical plant of the art museum, that is located directly across the street from the art museum, that is, is an eyesore and a blight to the neighborhood. And if that can be replaced by a building with, that is, that, that looks like it's part of the campus of the museum, that looks like it's one unit all working together, and it's animated by 100 people coming and going and doing their business, that, that makes for a lively, healthy neighborhood.
Yeah, okay. We've had several art businesses in downtown, and no economic growth has been realized as a result. So back to my earlier question, what are the market studies that say that this is going to actually sprout economic development once this goes through? Do we have any studies?
We have not commissioned a study in Pittsburgh. I think that's one of the things that we want to do, is to make sure that we're going to be able to bring the right type of artists in to be able to fill the building.
Shouldn't those studies have been conducted before this process kicked off? Because that was the intent?
Actually, the studies are, so we did do a very small preliminary study to say, from the Twin City CDC perspective, was this something that we could go forward with? I think that's part of the agreement that we have now, is we don't want to invest, if the council doesn't, isn't interested in giving us the building, I don't want to spend all the money that it takes, the time and the effort to go forward with a project. So that's his basic sort of real estate development. We put forward, here's our proposal, I need something back that says, yeah, we think this is a good idea. And in fact, that's how this agreement was crafted, so that if the project, if it looks like it's not going to be successful, if we can't attract the artist, Twin City CDC leaves, you have the building, and we're done.
It makes perfect sense to me. I guess from where I'm sitting, it would help me if I had those studies before making a, making a vote, taking a vote on going forward with this or not. So I had some more comfort as to if this will be successful or not. But be that as it may, you know, I don't want to come across like I'm not appreciative of your efforts and, and the organization's efforts, by no means whatsoever. And I hope that doesn't get painted as such, which I'm expecting it to get painted as, that I am against the museum, I'm against revitalizing the museum and helping the museum, it's ridiculous. But where I stand, I looked at the RFP, and unfortunately, and this is the city that put the RFP together, not me, they said that anything over 25% subsidized housing is the least favorable option for the city of Pittsburgh. And that gave me pause, only because I'm told every which way, there's no other alternative for that building. I disagree with that assessment. So where I'm going with this is, why, in the city of Worcester, you said they don't have any artist colonies. Why, did I mishear you? I'm sorry.
The city has been no help.
No help.
No help. There are one legal artist building in Worcester, it's called the Sprinkler Factory, it's an old sprinkler factory. There are several buildings where artists are illegally squatting.
Okay. And, and my last thing I'll say is, the reason why I'm asking these questions about the subsidized component is not because I'm anti-subsidized housing, or not because I don't believe it brings any growth. I'm looking at statistics we've gotten from the assessor's office, and I'm also looking at the fact that our tax base is 80% housing in the city of Pittsburgh, 80%. Collectively in this room, we've always talked about, what is the deficiency area of our economic base? And it's not housing, it's commercial development. We are barely at 20% commercial development. So we've all had a focus on this. So when this project came before me, I said to myself, well, if I look like I'm against this, the reason being is, everyone's going to say, well, what would you rather do? That building's not collecting tax revenue, it's not sitting there deteriorating. My only point is, with all of the historic gems that we have in the city, since we all acknowledge that we need commercial development, this is one area to start. So I'm just a little disappointed that we're not going to do commercial, for those reasons. We don't need more housing, we need more commercial investment. And all the projects before this that touted that there would be commercial investment have not panned out, so forgive me if I'm just skeptical that this will be different. That's all.
So Counselor, I just would say that we also understood the city's need. We had hoped that the charter school would take over the school, take over the BF Brown School and use it that way. The way, and there is no mechanism to bring in the equity to allow the type of pure commercial development that you're envisioning to take place. This is sort of a mix that we can do, that will be some commercial and some residential. And I think we, at Twin City CDC, we believe this will be a great boost because of the way artists work, that there is both a commercial component and a residential component. And that's part of why we came up with this creative solution, to be able to thread that needle to generate not just half-housing, but to generate something that would work financially and would also meet the city's objective of being economic development. It'd be much simpler for us to just do straight housing. This is something that we are doing, it's a lot harder to do than that, it's we're doing it because we believe this meets the needs of the city, it's what we're hearing from our members, it's what we're hearing from residents, and it's because we're a community development corporation, that we're locally based, that we're willing to take on the risk to be able to, and the extra effort and time to be able to do this.
You said there's a commercial component to this house, is it zoned as such? Or is the building zoned as residential?
I don't know what the building is zoned now, we will have to come back, and there's a zoning strategy also, that will allow us to be able to create the artist's studio spaces. So for example, you know, there'll be, as I mentioned, there'll be a blacksmith shop, or a kiln, or a video place, or a music, or whatever it will be, all of those things aren't residential.
Thank you. I'll save the rest of my comments for the council's, a whole meeting on this matter. Thank you.
Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to maybe put a little bit of a different spin in your success and some of the other work that you've done, Mark, and I just, this is a different kind of project, obviously. I guess all I want to say is that I have a lot of faith in you and a lot of trust. And you've done well with your projects before, I expect to see the same thing this time. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you.
Counselor Beazall.
Thank you. So right now in Boston, there's 30 existing artist housing, and on them, they list them as being living and work. Would that, would that be, this place would be a living and working spot for people?
Yeah, artist buildings come in, in basically two different varieties. One is just studio space, where artists go to rent space to make their artwork, little commercial spaces, little factories, as it were, one-person factories for the making of artwork. And then the other kind of artist building is what's called artist live-work space, where there's an apartment in association with a studio, and that's what we're talking about for BF Brown. So it's, it's both.
The other question I have is, in order to get into these, you need to have an artist certificate. And I guess in Boston, through the Boston redevelopment authority, they actually have a committee together that people actually have to go in front of, and they actually have to, actually be approved to have the certificate in order to live in this, in these housing. Is that, so would we accept other certificates, or are we, is this something that is going to be a group of people deciding who lives there?
We would, the museum and the community development corporation would create a process that works for the city and for this project, and it will be based on, not word for word, line for line, on some of these other models. Almost every city with artist housing has one of these systems in place for determining who's a bona fide artist and who's not. And we would look at a lot of those models, see which ones most closely echo the situation that we have here in Pittsburgh, and adapt that model to our needs. So there, there would be some, there would be, there would be a system, there would be some kind of committee, there would be stated criteria, it would all be very clear.
Okay. And lastly, I, I want to thank both of you for your commitment. I'm a firm believer that this is something that could definitely work, as long as the city doesn't just wash its hands, I think. In the past, we've had instances where we've had buildings, and we've just gone like this once they're gone. There has to be a commitment from the city to help out. There would be nothing more enjoyable, I think, than the beautiful parks that we have, seeing artists in our parks, or having art exhibits in our parks. The Apple Carman would be an excellent place to have that. So I commend you on the art museum's dedication to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beazall.
Again, I just want to make sure that I heard this, that you're looking to take over the BF Brown School, the annex and the stables, at a cost of, you think about $15 million is the investment of that? And in those three properties, 55 units would be housing units, and eight of those 55 would be at a lower or reduced rent?
There's, let me, you're very close, let me just, I'll just clarify a few things. So the annex is in private hands, we still have to acquire that building. That is connected to this project, we don't want to own that without owning this one, so we're working on that. There'll be three different levels of apartments. One will be purely market rate, that would be at least 30%. Almost all of the apartments will then be affordable, with no, affordable at that $700 range that I had spoken about, it could be a little bit higher or low, it could be a little bit higher depending upon the size of the apartment. There will be eight apartments that will be for families, that will have an operating subsidy attached to them.
What exactly does that mean?
It means that the rent is based on this, on their income.
Not necessarily artist.
They could be artists, they would, artists would still have a preference for those, so we think that they could be very popular for artists. You know, somebody who just graduated from college who doesn't, who's just struggling to start their career. We think that these apartments could be very popular for artists, because the rents would be the lowest that they have. Artists, the way their income is calculated, because they're their own business and they're using Schedule C and all the rest of those things, could end up with low incomes, and this could be one of the most attractive things that we have, to be able to have people come here. And that's one of the amenities that Pittsburgh has, is lower rents, as Nick was saying, compared to Boston, or Somerville, or some of the other places.
All right. And the BF Brown building itself is about 55,000 feet? It's big, right? I mean, it's a large facility. So when we talk about the commercial space in that, I envision like little studios that if, you know, some of the local artists here that are in the room want to rent that little studio space and do their work there, they would have the ability to do that. If I wanted to rent an hour and throw clay on the wheel and act out of seeing a ghost, I could do that, correct? Well, maybe not, but. I mean, is that what we're, we're looking for, to build a commercial base, so that, we could do that, right? We could rent out those little studio spaces for a commercial, a commercial rate, artist-related, art-related.
We will definitely have that artist space in there. It's not, depending upon how the financing works, it's not clear exactly whether that space, this depends on what the demand says, but what the artist study says. So if there's enough demand for that space, then we could create something as you were suggesting. If there's not enough demand, then the artist's space there would be used for the artists in the building, or through some other connection to the building. But if we do have enough space, if we do have enough demand for just strictly studio space, then yes, that is something that we would consider developing for a small portion, for the appropriate-sized portion of the building, I should say.
At a commercial rate?
Correct. If, if it's appropriate. So that's part of what the study has to validate, is whether we can do that, and whether with our financing, we can make the whole thing fit together. The financing piece of this is a complicated piece, and so in order to bring the equity in, we have to make sure that we can use all these, there's a lot of different financing mechanisms that need to be able to come together to make it work. But that is our ideal, and the first piece of that is going to be to say, what's the demand for that type of a studio? So once we know what the demand is, once we know, is it $100 an hour, $50 an hour, $20 an hour, $10 an hour, whatever it is, we can then back out and then say, great, this portion of the building will be able to support itself in this fashion, or it's not, in which case we need to find another subsidy if we want to go in the direction that you're talking about. We could end up, one of the possibilities would be that there wouldn't be available studios for the community to rent, that all the studios would be available just to artists somehow connected to the building, and we might not charge for them because of how the, because of how the project will come together. It's just too early to say.
Okay.
But that would be the ideal.
Thank you.
Counsel Kady.
It's going to be 30 years next month that I open my business. I was a young kid, I was scared to death, there's no guarantees. I'm hearing you, what you're saying is, you've got to take the proper steps, you're trying to create the plan. That's what you have to do. We don't want, we don't want to do this and see you fail. I don't want to see you fail. I think that Pittsburgh needs to take a chance, we need to do something. We have a moment in time right now where everything seems to be lining up for us. We have the cultural district, the historical society, the art museum, the college. We have the history, historic buildings on Main Street, and we've got many people around us that want to make it happen. I applaud you for moving forward. Go slow, put all your ducks in a row. I hope that the city, not, not City Hall, not the city council, I hope the city embraces this idea. Every time I go somewhere, anywhere I go, Burlington, Vermont, Cambridge, Somerville, and you see what these other communities are doing, we have to do this, we have to make a move right now. So thank you very much. I, I will give you my full support the whole time.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Counsel Kuschberg.
Gentlemen, thank you both for being here this evening. You spoke about the city of Worcester, and maybe other communities that, you know, that haven't really stepped up, they haven't put skin in the game. And I guess my question is directed both at you, but perhaps Larry Casasso, who's here, if the president will allow it. What is the city willing to commit, and how is the city willing to help in making this a successful venture?
Well, I can tell you, Counselor, that we have been meeting on a regular basis with the CDC since the time of their initial proposal, and I think that since that time, the movement that has taken place has been in the positive direction. The proposed financing for the project does include a proposal that the city provide some home funds as part of a subsidy for the, for the, for some of the units in the property, so there would be city's participation in that way financially, if the funds were available for that purpose. And I think the conditions that we agreed to also call for the city being very integrally involved, along with the art museum and the Twin City CDC, in the development of this artist market study. Because we want to be sure that what we're getting out of that study are good comparables in similar cities for similar types of housing that have been successful, and that have also been shown to generate some sort of economic multiplier effect that would be more than you could normally expect from housing of this type. So the bar has been raised pretty high, and by agreeing to this purchase and sale as it's been conditioned, what we're doing is essentially giving the CDC, the art museum, and the city an opportunity to work together to see if we can actually clear that bar. You know, the jury's still out, it's an optimistic projection, and we're hoping that with additional funding from the state, that doesn't come necessarily with requirements that units be restricted by income for an extended period of time, especially because new funding that is available for gateway cities like Pittsburgh, where the problem isn't gentrification and the lack of affordable housing, but the lack of people who have enough income to support the commercial development and growth we want to see happen in our downtown. So that's the goal. And, and I think we hope to get that 70% number down a little bit, and hope to get that 30% number up a little bit. And also demonstrate that we know what kind of artists are out there that would actually move into these, move into this property, and have a reasonable degree of confidence that that's what would happen.
Thank you. So I mean, between the two of your organizations, the CDC and the Pittsburgh Art Museum, you've, it seems like you've been forging collaborative partnerships- It seems like you've been forging collaborative partnerships and relationships throughout the city, throughout this process, and working with the city, and I hope that the city is sincere in its efforts in working with this, you know, if it comes to fruition, to making it a successful venture for all the organizations involved. And just two years ago, this organization... This council passed Resolution 05913, which supported the application for the city to the Mass Cultural Council and for the city itself to become a cultural site, and in particular, our downtown, the same area that BF Brown would fall into. And in doing so, there was a pledge from the city to support a movement to cultivate and steward our arts community. I've heard over the past two years, ample times where we've talked about a lack of direction in the city and a lack of direction for where we're taking our downtown and how we're going to develop our economy downtown. I think this is really two birds with one stone. We can both select the direction, the future direction of our downtown and really set forth an opportunity to work collaboratively throughout the city. So I think, you know, no one's going to come to save our city. We have to learn to save our city ourselves with the pieces and the organizations and the partners that we have here, and it seems like they're all at the table. You can look across the room and you can see so many different organizations and players at the table right now who are in support of this. So if we want to see a period of unprecedented economic growth, reality is, you know, we have to string together a series of large and small successes alike. This has the opportunity to be a large success for the city. Speak ad nauseam about the positive things that could happen as a result of this, but I think the biggest takeaway is, you know, don't let the perfect or the ideal, the Boston's or the Cambridges of the world, get in the way of what could be great progress for the city. So thank you for being here. I'm excited about the next steps. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Counselor Boishman.
Mark, I want to make sure I understand you very carefully. You're telling me you're going to be able to make $25,000 to $50,000, right?
Excuse me, Counselor?
$25,000 to $50,000 is an income?
They... The minimum would need to be $25,000 to be able to afford an apartment, and the maximum would be around that $50,000 range.
Now, you're telling me... You're telling this council that 30% is going to be market-rate housing. 30%. That's 15 units, right?
However many units we build, 30% of them will have no income restriction on the tenants that move into the building.
What happens if you can't rent them?
If I can't rent what, sir?
The market-rate housing.
Well, that would be... I think that's one of the things that we feel pretty comfortable about, because we developed 470 Main Street, that which is a market-rate building. I think we feel pretty comfortable about that number. That's one of the pieces of this that we're most confident about, is what those market-rate rents are and what sorts of amenities and things like that we need to design because of the project of 470 Main Street that we have already going.
Now, one other ques... I got two other questions.
Sure.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Affordable housing. Affordable housing. Is it when a tenant comes in and can only afford this, and somebody else comes in and pay... Makes a difference? Is that?
So there will be eight units, roughly. No more than eight, I don't believe at this time, that will have their rent paid in that fashion. Everybody else has to write us a check for the full amount of the rent.
So if you can't rent it, you will... You'd be going to affordable housing?
No. The... What do you mean? With an operating subsidy? No. The rules are such with the financing that we're doing that we can't do that for more than eight units.
All right. And my final question. How much money do you think you're going to be spending on the Annex to repair it? Because I took a ride by there numerous times. I'm not a carpenter or anything, but it's pretty bad, rough shape. I mean, the thing's falling apart. You look outside and almost see through the building.
Yes, that is one of the issues that we've been really looking at very carefully, and it's one of the reasons why we have not per... It's why we haven't purchased that building, is because we really want to do a thorough study of that, and we don't want to do that with the time, the effort into that until we know that there's a project with it. We don't want to end up with just the Annex and not end up with the main building itself. So the cost for that building, I don't have that broken out that way, but I do know that our costs are about $30 a square foot higher is what we've projected for the construction on that compared to the stables and compared to BF Brown itself.
So you get subsidized from the taxpayers, right? People like me to spend as much money as you want to renovate a building? And where a commercial guy, a regular guy in business wouldn't do it?
Actually, there are many... There are many for-profit developers that build most of the housing of the same type that we do. The reason why they wouldn't do a project like this is because it doesn't make enough money for them, Counselor. They would rather do 100 units in a long mill where the construction costs are lower, the zoning is easier, all of those sorts of things. To be able to do three different buildings, relatively small number of units in each building, is not affordable for a private for-profit developer that uses the exact same... Exact same financing mechanisms that I do, and that's why they generally don't do it. They're usually looking for larger projects. So for us, the largest number of units is... I don't have it broken down the way I thought I did, sorry. I can't tell you exactly how many I have in the BF Brown Building, but the...
I think it's 55.
55 for all three buildings. But it's too small a project to be able to bother doing the Annex and to be able to bother doing the stables. So that's why we're interested in it and why other developers are not interested in it, because they can't make the money given the time and the effort, three roofs, all the complexities of doing it. As a community development corporation, it's right up our alley. It's what our members want. So that's why we can afford to be able to do these projects.
Okay, Steve. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. We have 015-15, the annual report of Montezuma Regional Aid from Technical High School.
Waive the reading of the annual report and place it on file in the City Clerk's office.
Motion second, that the reading of the report be waived and the report be placed and filed in the Clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Public Safety Committee, oral report. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met earlier this evening, and following were voted on. 11-15, Counselor Angelo Beazall, to create handicap parking for van parking, van pickup, and handicap parking in the municipal parking lot behind 285 Main Street. That was given leave to withdraw unanimously. Petition 12-15, Councilors Angelo Beazall and Michael Kuschmerich, to change 14-meter parking spaces located at the corner of Boulder Ave and Newton Place, across from the youth library entrance, to library two-hour parking spaces. That was granted three to two. 13-15, Counselor Paul Boishman, to request that customers exiting the Citco Gas Station on Lower Main Street make left-hand turns either Willow Street or North Street for safety purposes. Also request that no left-hand turn sign be placed there. That was given leave to withdraw four to one. Finally, 14-15, Counselor Paul Boishman, to request that customers using Dunkin' Donuts on Lower Main Street make left-hand turns using North Street at the lights for safety purposes. Also request that no left-hand turn sign be placed there as well. That was given leave to withdraw four to one.
Would the committee's report be accepted?
Second.
Motion second, that the Public Safety Committee report be accepted. Speaking to the motion, Counselor...
Mr. Brown, I'd like to pull 13-15 and 14-15, please.
For separate votes?
Yes.
Counselor, okay?
Also, Paul. 15.
Do you want to do them all separately?
Then we'll do them all separately, since we're getting there.
And I move that 11... The recommendation for 11-15 be approved.
First one is...
188-13 was held in committee, I believe, right?
Oh, that was held? I'm sorry, okay.
11-15 be leave to draw.
Second.
Motion second, that 11-15 be given leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Move that 12-15 be granted? Second.
Motion second, that 12-15 be granted? Speaking to the motion, Counselor Joseph.
We're just... We're hacking at parking spaces 10 at a time, 20 at a time, whacking them out, whacking them in. Where's the treasurer? Okay? I'm not going to do it... I'm not going to vote for another parking space to be removed until I get a report from the treasurer that this makes sense, okay? I know the councilors want them, and I know the reasons why you want them, but we have a parking plan. We have a reason why we do things. Can't we just have a comprehensive plan to say either we want to just have parking garages and then everything else in the city is free, or everything in the city is free, but why are we hacking at these things 10 at a time? I just... I don't get it. I think that we need a plan. I think we need to hear from somebody that says this is what the plan is, this is why we need it, this is why we don't need it. But I just... I'm just... I just don't think that the councilors are the main drive behind why we should have them and why we shouldn't have them. I think that's the treasurer's responsibility, and I want to see a report from the treasurer as to why we have spots, why we don't, why they all should be parking meters, or they should all not be parking meters. But I'm not going to continue to vote for these five at a time. Just my thoughts.
Counselor Dean Natale.
Counselor Joseph, you stated exactly what I said at the committee meeting. I voted against this too for the same reasons. We're doing this piecemeal. We're doing this without a plan. We're doing this with the... We talked about having a parking committee that we, this council, established to look into this, and what we're doing is we're circumventing that committee. We're passing things and then sending them to the treasurer for him to enact on. So I said at the meeting, why don't we just dissolve the parking committee if we're not going to use it? Not to mention, you know, does the city engineering staff, does the police department, treasurer all collectively follow what it is we're doing? While we understand that there is a need to remove parking meters, there needs to be some comprehension as to how we go about doing this. And if we're not going to follow what we originally signed up for with this committee, then get rid of the committee, and if some want to do it piecemeal, fine. I like Counselor Joseph. I'm not going to support any of them going forward until I get some kind of comprehensive idea of where we're going with this, because as I said in the meeting, dissolve the committee or right now pass a petition that just gets rid of every single parking meter in the city, because we're cherry picking at this point. So I'm going to vote against this as well. Thank you.
Counselor Beazall.
The reason for this petition, and I don't want this to get confused with the parking committee. Parking committee was basically formed to take a look at the parking downtown Pittsburgh for businesses. This has got nothing to do with businesses. This is going to provide 14-meter parking spaces for kids and their parents that want to park while there's activities taking place at the public library. This is not about somebody parking at this restaurant or that restaurant. This is about adding parking to the library so that parents can safely take their children out of a car and bring them to the public library. As I stated before, when they talked about the revenues for this, it was $2,000 a year or $40 a week. I am more than willing to give the city, out of my stipend, $40 a week to provide 14 spaces for parents that can take their children to the library. So the parking committee, as far as I'm concerned, has nothing to do with this. This is strictly public safety so that we can have spaces for the library. Thank you.
Counselor Bean.
Just a point of clarification. So we're taking parking spaces now that have one-hour parking and making them two hours? So it's still paid parking? It's not free parking?
They will be, just like the six spaces that are down there right now. They have... The library has six spaces that are two-hour free parking. Most of the programs that take place at the library are an hour, okay? So parents need at least an hour to be going into these programs, bringing their kids in there, and getting them out, so they need at least two hours available so they don't get tickets. I know there was some concern about how do we make sure that this person doesn't park there? And I think the main focus here is, there's always going to be somebody to take advantage of a situation, but I think if this is done correctly and it's monitored, I think that this will be a great thing for the library. It'll encourage people to use the library, especially this time of year where parking on the side of the road is just... It'd be ridiculous for somebody with children. Thank you.
Is that continuing on this, Chris? I guess we're taking paid parking, making it free parking. My concern is that our parking revenues are going down slowly. We have some big concerns at our parking ramps, our garages, that are falling apart. Normally, the money that we get from our parking receipts go towards that. I have to agree with Counselor Joseph and Counselor Dean Natale. I'd like to get the treasurer in here to find out where we stand with parking receipts. He mentioned something about doing a parking study about the parking decks, what we're going to do. I think it's some kind of mishmash. I think we need to get some order and evidence in a coordinated fashion, and I don't think holding this off for a little bit longer is going to put people at risk. I just think that we need to do something in a coordinated fashion, and I think getting the treasurer in here first would be the first thing to do.
Counselor Joseph.
I'm not looking for any money from Counselor Beazall's pocket, first off, but we have the Registry of Deeds there. We have ARC there. We have the courthouse there. We have City Hall there. There's a lot of people that could or would be using those spaces that are not library personnel. And the library personnel, if they run programs, is that two hours a week? Is that four hours a week? How many hours a week is it... Would it actually be an issue that the library's not getting those spaces? I'm just... I... I guess I'm not a believer in, oh, it's just the library. There's a lot of things around there that are using those parking spaces that are not the library. And like I said before, if it costs you 50 cents to go to a two-hour program at the library, it's going to cost you two hours to go to a two-hour program at the library, just like it's going to cost you 50 cents to do business at the courthouse for two hours, or it's going to cost you 50 cents to go to the Registry of Deeds for two hours, or it's going to cost you 50 cents to go to the City Hall Cafe. I mean, it's just... It's just another activity downtown, and 50... If it costs 50 cents to go to do it, and that's what's going to defray you from going down there, then I would give somebody in the library 50 cents for everybody that wants to park there.
Counselor Boishman.
I'm against your petition, Angelo, because I think it's the big parking garage. You're not walking on the street. You can park your car for two hours. You can leave there, go right across... Right over... Right up there, right through the parking lot, and right across the street to the library. So why are we doing that? Why are we going to get free parking? They already get free parking at the garage. So I'm not in favor.
Motion in a second. Drop 12-15. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
One, two, three, four, five, six in opposition.
Hold your hands up again, guys, please. Then two, three, four, five, six.
Two, three, four. Who's the sixth? Jeff?
Joel.
Joel?
Mike? Jeff. Jeff.
Jeff? Kuschmerich?
No.
Caddie?
No.
No?
Bean, Caddie, Joseph, Dean Natale, Boishman, and Tran.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Motion to refer 12-15 to the parking committee?
Second.
It's already pending.
Yeah.
It was given leave to withdraw before, wasn't it?
The... No. No, 12-15, just the committee's recommendation didn't pass.
To the parking committee?
Huh?
To the parking committee? This was just before...
Twelve fifteen was the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee, let it be adopted. That recommendation just lost. So it's defeated.
Okay.
It can come back. Three fifteen.
On the petition?
Move three fifteen be given leave to withdraw.
On the petition?
I'm sorry?
On the petition, can I speak?
Yeah, once we get a motion, we'll speak to the motion.
Move three fifteen be given leave to withdraw.
We have a motion, a second, that three fifteen be given leave to withdraw. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Boshman. Thirteen, I'm sorry.
President Hay, you don't mind if I have Paul McNamara come up and talk?
I do.
You do mind?
His opportunity to speak when we had a committee meeting.
All right. You put me in a bind yesterday.
Sorry about that, Counsel.
On that petition, again, I'm gonna talk to you. You had a young man talk prior to the meeting saying it's a safety, it's a safety issue. Again, I repeat, a safety issue. So I'm gonna ask you two guys tonight, all you councilors, to close your eyes for a minute and visualize this, walking down a corridor that you cannot see. So close your eyes. And there'll be four councilors who may be walking across this corridor, be Amy Green, Mike Kuschmerich, and Andrew. As we go through this corridor, Amy Green bumps into something, she gets shaken up a little bit, and she does get hurt a little. Andrew doesn't see the person in front of him, and all of a sudden, he bumps into that person because he could not see. And Mike Kuschmerich, who was quick on his feet, was able to stop just in time. So I ask you, I'm asking you again, for the people of Pittsburgh, for your residents and my residents, to give them this light. That's all I ask. Have them take a left on Knott Street and a left on Willow Street for safety. You can't pick and choose, I repeat, you cannot pick and choose what safety is over here and what safety is over here, and it's not safe here. It's not about a business, it's about your constituents. You're not gonna hurt the man's business. I keep on saying that.
Again, if we go to the visual of pulling through Dunkin' Donuts drive-thru, we're at the window, we've gotten our coffee, how do you want me to get out of Dunkin' Donuts' parking lot without taking, if I wanna go left, I mean, from that window, when you get your coffee, there's no, you want me to turn right only, and then go up North Street and up and around and everything, but are you also going to limit cars that come through that intersection to take a left into Dunkin' Donuts or the gas station? Because now they have to cross over two lanes of traffic to get there.
Steve?
Thank you. That was my point.
Counsel Boshman.
The difference between the, what you're talking about, what you're saying, there's two lanes of traffic. Now you're leaving Dunkin' Donuts or the Sitco gas station, you gotta go through four lanes of traffic, and when there's a light that's red, and the light's red, and the traffic's tied up, and a Good Samaritan like Marcus lets me go, but I'm stuck in the left lane and I can't move, and he's there because he can't see the cars coming. We're holding traffic up, we're holding, you're holding the flow of traffic, and that's what causes accidents. The whole purpose is, I'm trying to do, is make it simpler and easier for the people buying stuff to be able to travel and go to their destination easy. When you have to wait, we're very impatient, and especially when you sit behind a light for three sets of lights, then you cut off people, and then the fingers fly, and people start getting mad, and they toot the horn. And you fly up Main Street, and Counsel Caddy says, well, we gotta get one lane of traffic up here 'cause we're driving too fast. Why are we driving too fast? Because this gets stuck 20 minutes down there on Lower Main Street, because the Good Samaritan Marcus had to lead this young guy go by, or this pretty girl. You're going across four lanes of traffic, four, not two. I'm not trying to stop anybody from taking a left turn to get service, never said that. When you lead the premises, go to your right, Willow Street, go to your left, Knott Street. With CBS coming in, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a nightmare down there. You won't be able to see when you're coming out of there after, 'cause the light's gonna turn and people gonna, people aren't coming, you're gonna be there forever.
Counselor Dean Tally.
Just wanna move the question?
We have a motion, a second, to give thirteen fifteen leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Course.
One in opposition.
Motion to make fourteen fifteen leave to withdraw.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to give fourteen fifteen leave to withdraw. Counselor Joseph.
I just wanna go to my comment because of the gentleman that was here earlier that said that this was a business decision and not a Public Safety Commission decision, because I did not make my decision based on the business. Okay? I made my decision based on common sense. Okay? If I'm not, if I'm going to come out of there at rush hour and try to take a left, I'm an idiot. Okay? If I'm gonna come out of there at eight o'clock in the morning after I've gotten gas on a Saturday morning and take a left to go home, then I don't wanna have to go all the way around town to get out of there. If it's busy, I go through Dunkin' Donuts, I take a left, I take the light, and I take a left. It's common sense. This wasn't a public safety, this wasn't a business-for-business issue, even though we do wanna be business-friendly. This was a common sense reason why I made this vote, not a business decision.
Counselor Dean Tally.
I too voted against this, not because of the business owners. I think I made it quite clear in my past that I don't care what I am perceived as, as long as I have facts in front of me. The point here is, there was a study cited from 20 years ago that showed some level of accidental activity going on in that area. It did not, however, state that the reasons for those accidents were because of the layout of that business park. And there was a good point made that if you're gonna restrict turns from that side of the road, what about the other side of the road? If you're exiting out of Pittsburgh Plumbing or out of the Intermodal Train Station and you wanna take a left coming out of that area, you'd have to go through two lanes of traffic going to the right, and it's the same deal. So usually, when there are issues that are brought forward like this, there's a clamor of residents that are saying that there is a safety concern. I have not, personally, been notified of any such concerns. I patronize that area too, and it's driver discretion, like it is in a lot of sections of the city of Pittsburgh. So unless there's some empirical evidence, recent evidence, to suggest that there is a high volume of traffic, a high volume of accidents caused as a result of the turns required, then I would think differently regardless of who the business owner is. And in deference to the business owner, you know, they were talking about how they're against it, but I'm telling you, if people do not feel safe going to any establishment, they're not gonna go. It's like going to a club or a sporting event. If there's a history of violence or illegal activity going on, people will not go to them. So unless these businesses, and these business owners will feel the heat if they are not abiding by the safety of their patrons, because they just won't shop there anymore. But I haven't seen any evidence to suggest that that turn is the cause of any accidents that have occurred in the last 20 years. If the evidence can be provided as such, then I would reconsider this vote. Thank you.
Questions, President?
Counsel Boshman would like to speak, and he's the petitioner, so I will allow it. Counsel Boshman.
You know, they say common sense. Well, common sense, don't play with matches, because when you play with matches, you might get burned, and a lot of people do get burned when they play with matches, don't they? And don't we also have fiery strangers and different things on, because common sense says this is good for you? The government said to me one time, not me, the businesses, they said, you gotta wear safety glasses, safety glasses, they told you. And businesses said, oh, you're gonna bankrupt us, you're gonna make us die.
We need to stick with the petition, Mr. President. Not, I'm not sure what it has to do with the petition, but...
All right, I'll go back to the petition.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go back to the petition. When he talked about Mott and the left, the left lane will slow your pathway in Pittsburgh Plumbing, there's a big difference. You're taking this light, you're coming to the thing, you can look up and you can look down, you can look straight ahead. When you're coming out of those places, you can't look up, 'cause there's a tractor-trailer in front of you, or a van, or a car. You can't see up, and you cannot see down. That's the difference. You can look and see. You can see up, and you can see down, and you can look ahead, and you can see if there's somebody in front of you. You can't see people in front of you. You can't see up or down. That's it.
We have a motion, a second, to give fourteen fifteen leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Course.
Two in opposition. Hearings, oh eight fifteen. Comcast of Massachusetts, to install a new conduit system to provide service to 480 Main Street as outlined in the enclosed petition. Declare the hearing open. Is there representatives here? Gentlemen. Yeah, if you could give your names to the clerk for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm the Melk, and I'm Project Coordinator with Comcast.
Anything you'd like to say before we start the councilors asking questions?
Basically, we're here, we're planning to bring service to 480 Main Street. That's, we're here for.
Counselor Bean.
And I'm not sure if you have the answers, but, you know, Main Street has had a lot of digging, a lot of construction over the past three or four months, could be, seems like forever.
Right.
Is this new dig, new holes being dug and new trenches being dug that, I mean, there's a Main Street just constantly under, under construction, and is there any way to coordinate this? I mean, coordinating more of the work being done?
Yes, it is, but it's not gonna take place in Main Street. It's gonna take place on Putnam Street. We have an existing vault at the corner of Putnam and Boulder Drive, we're gonna take off from there, go up approximately 146 feet, and then go into 480 Main Street.
Are you gonna be digging on Main Street, or just on...
No, sir.
No digging on Main Street, just Putnam, and then you're gonna go into the building?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
When do you plan on doing it?
After the moratorium, going to the moratorium.
Okay, 'cause... Yeah. Whenever the, doesn't stop freezing, because I just, I mean, we, Putnam Street is part of the July 4th bicycle...
Right.
...but you plan on being done well before the...
Oh, yes.
Making sure that the road is safe afterwards?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the councilors? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone here speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, declare the hearing closed. The matter is before you.
Will we adopt eight dash fifteen?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt eight dash fifteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Orders, finance. Three oh eight fourteen, loan order for 4.6 million for airport capital improvements is outlined in the enclosed order. It's a final reading, it'll be a roll call vote.
Will the order be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt three oh eight fourteen. Madam Clerk?
President Hay?
Yes.
Counselor Bean?
Yay.
Counselor Boishman?
Yay.
Counselor Beazall?
Yay.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Joseph?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
Counselor Kuschmerich?
Yay.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Oh sixteen fifteen, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the police fiscal year fifteen, Shannon Community Safety Initiative grant in the approximate amount of $216,790 for the purpose of said grant.
Will suspension rules?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for suspension of the rules on sixteen fifteen. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is before you.
Will the order be adopted?
Second.
Motion, a second, that sixteen fifteen be adopted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Orders, other, eighteen fifteen.
Suspension on eighteen fifteen?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for suspension of the rules on eighteen fifteen, and order that the dates of the regular meeting of the city council for the year two thousand and fifteen be amended, see enclosed order. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Orders, seven fifteen, ordinance that the, that chapter 169, section 76 of the Code of City of Pittsburgh, entitled Stop Intersections, as most recently amended, be further amended by adding thereto, and you've got the stop sign, stop sign on Scott Road, Plymouth Street, Newtonville Ave, direction of traffic both at the intersections of Ringe Road, Madison Street, Ryan Gold Ave. Final reading.
Seven fifteen be sent to its final reading, ordained, enrolled, and advertised.
Motion, a second, that oh seven fifteen be sent to its third and final reading, ordained, enrolled, and advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Nineteen fifteen, ordinance amending chapter 169, section 54C, section one, entitled Redesence Only Permit Parking, area's toe zone is outlining the enclosed ordinance, Snow Street, referencing petition two ninety-seven fourteen.
Motion to send nineteen fifteen to its first reading.
Second.
Motion, a second, that nineteen fifteen be sent to its first reading. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Boshman.
Yes, I just want my show that I don't believe in this. I don't think that I should be subsidizing somebody that owns property so he can have parking, and that's how I feel that this petition is, because I drove down there, and everybody on that street's got parking, driveway to park their cars, and a couple houses down.
We have a motion, a second, to send nineteen fifteen to its first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
One in opposition. Twenty fifteen, ordinance amending chapter 169, section 25 of the Code of City of Pittsburgh, entitled Parking Prohibited Certain Hours as outlined in the enclosed petition, Lady and Normandy Road, reference petition three oh seven fourteen.
Motion to send twenty fifteen to its first reading.
Second.
Motion, a second, to send twenty fifteen to its first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
motions. Motion to send zero twenty-two fifteen up to and including zero twenty-seven fifteen to their respective committees?
Motion, a second, to send zero twenty-two fifteen up to and including zero twenty-seven fifteen to their respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Any other business, councilors? Counselor?
Just for the record, I'd like to put the Monticuce Regional Vocational School annual report on file. Did we do that?
We did.
And I just wanted to mention that I have the Ward Six meeting, February 9th, next